We're right at 6 o'clock, so I will call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Valente.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here.
I would like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to unify the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested party's opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. And we'll see. We don't have any candidates signed up for open forum this evening. So with that, we will move on to our next item this evening. And very exciting, we have a guest, Mr. Reader, with the League of Minnesota Cities, and is here to speak with us about our street sweeper program. And welcome. And I don't know if members of staff, if any opening comments before we turn it over to Mr. Reader.
No.
The floor is yours. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Is that all right?
Perfect.
Very good. Mayor, council, staff, and visitors, I'd like to really thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm always happy to go out and talk about something, good things, and this is a good opportunity to do that. As you mentioned, I'm Don Reader. I'm the Public Affairs Coordinator for the League of Minnesota Cities. And among my duties there, I also coordinate the awards programs, including the City of Excellence Program. For those of you who might not be as familiar with the League, we are the state's largest municipal membership association, and we have about 830 out of Minnesota's 850-plus cities as members. And we also have a number of special districts that are League members as well. So I'm here tonight, again, to publicly recognize the City of Forest Lake in collaboration with the Forest Lake Comfort Lake Watershed District because you have won the City of Excellence Award in the population category of cities over 20,000 for your enhanced street sweeping program. And this honor was first announced earlier this summer at the League's annual conference in Duluth. And the video we're going to see in a few minutes was also first shown there as well. So the City of Excellence Awards are presented each year by the League for outstanding accomplishments, achievements in city government involving programs, projects, or initiatives. Each year, we honor cities in four popu-- excuse me, in three population categories. And also, we usually have a special topical category as well. Even though the awards program is designed specifically for LMC member cities, I'm really pleased tonight to have the honor of recognizing the significant role played in this project by Watershed District officials and staff as well. Few words about what we noticed about this particular entry. The judges were really impressed by the successful collaboration between the city and the Watershed District, and really believed that this could serve as a replicable model for other local governments who have an interest in addressing the dual goals that you addressed, of water impairment reduction and also of effective street maintenance. I happened to notice in last week's Forest Lake Times, the story that was submitted by a staff member from the Watershed District that talked about just that, other cities, other districts, thinking about working together in a similar fashion. So you are trendsetters with that. From our understanding, from the pursuit of program grant funds, to research, to implementation, both entities have worked hand in hand to make this program happen. We all know that the charge of city government, and why you're here tonight, is to provide high-quality services that enhance the quality of life for your residents and are also cost-effective, happens to be a bonus. The reduction in phosphorus load realized through the work of the Enhanced Sweeper is resulting in cleaner and clearer water, so it's indeed a success story. That potentially increases property values for Lake Forest residents and increases commercial interest in the city. Additionally, the sweeper will reduce the cost of road maintenance over time. So, again, a very impressive, a very impressive project submitted by the city and the Watershed District. And it really serves as a shining example of how two local government entities can come together to not only achieve organizational objectives, as you each did, but to benefit the health and well-being of the community. Of course, no successful initiative can happen without engaged and committed leadership. And the League congratulates and commends all the leaders sitting in here tonight who made this initiative possible. Congratulations, and thank you for your support of the program. Special thanks to Mr. Patrick Casey and Mr. Dave Adams from the city, who I believe are both here tonight, it looks like. And also Mike Kenny from the Forest Lake Comfort Lake Watershed District. There he is in the back. And all those gentlemen took some time to appear in the recognition video that we're going to show right now, so we thank you for your contributions to that. And with that, if we could take a look at the video, it's about a little less than three minutes long.
Give me one second.
When we started seeing the number of pounds that we recovered off the streets with Enhanced Street Sweeping, is that there is quite a bit of debris that is on the street that either you don't see or has accumulated in between those months, between spring and fall.
The knowledge that a lot of sediment and salt off the streets were going into the lake, into the waters. And this was a project that was hoping to reduce the sediment and salt and sand that goes into the lake and keep the water quality as best as possible.
A lake like Forest Lake is considered a deep lake, and so anything that is where the concentration of phosphorus is at above 40 milligrams per liter is considered impaired.
When we talked with the Watershed and, you know, looking into this grant program, it became apparent that, you know, if the grant was awarded to us, that what we were paying out in contract services, we could do the entire Enhanced Spring-Fall and Enhanced Street Sweeping with that dollar amount that we were paying out to the contractor.
The Watershed was a great driver for this entire grant process and filling out the application necessary and coming up with the numbers for total phosphorus reduction. And you need that technical expertise from a watershed to make that grant complete.
The grant we received was Bowser Grant, and it was the Minnesota Clean Water Fund grant that we received, and it was collaboration with Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District, Race Creek Watershed District, and the city. Within the next 10 years, we'll apply again for the same grant and hopefully get another sweeper funded because of the documentation of what we're actually showing, what we're doing with the sweeper.
You find a willing partner to assist in not only helping to write the grant and understand what grant funds are available, but also to then implement the program and get it approved and get going so that it's a success.
It's a no-brainer, dude, this project. If you can get that grant to get a sweeper and do this enhanced, the lakes are going to have, you know, unbelievable phosphorus reduction. And then the city's going to keep their infrastructure clean as well.
And with that, again, congratulations from the League. And if you want to send a representative up from the district and the city, maybe we'll do a photo or two, if that's all right.
Council, want to come down with me as well? Well, thank you to the League for the recognition this evening, and also ongoing thank you to our partners at the Watershed District. We couldn't do this partnership without you, so much appreciated. The Board of Governors and also staff at both the Watershed District and then also our own city staff who actually make this program come to life, so much appreciated. Thank you all tonight. All right. We will move on. Council, before you, is a consent agenda. We have items 7A through 7M for your consideration this evening. Happy to entertain a motion to either approve or change.
Mayor Bain, I'd like to pull item K.
And then would that be a motion to approve all others?
Yes, a motion to approve items 7A through J and L and M.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And consent agenda items approved. And moving on then to item 7K, which is the tobacco outlet, tobacco license. And Councilmember Beistrum?
Yeah, I just, I took a little spin around town. I know that this has been a topic of discussion for council in the past, and it's been a while since we've entertained conversation around this issue. But I know when we were working on Tobacco 21, we did have some conversation around tobacco density in the community. And my understanding was that we were going to kind of study this issue before new licenses were granted. And so I'm just a little bit confused to see this on the agenda this evening. You know, driving through town, doing a simple Google search, you know, immediately five tobacco establishments pop up, tobacco and vape establishments pop up. And that doesn't even include the grocery and convenience stores that we have in the community. And I understand that zoning permits it, and I value small businesses and their owners, but there needs to be a balance, I feel, between that free market and our vision for the community. I don't believe we need a tobacco retailer on every corner, every major intersection. There are things that can be done and that are being done in other communities, limiting the total number of retailers, so capping those licenses within a defined area. Reducing density through a cap-and-winnow approach. In other words, slowly decreasing the number of retailers by issuing fewer permits over time. So two permits for every three that fail to renew are revoked, for example. Or simply setting a limit and only issuing a new license when one fails to renew or has it revoked. So I vouch that this issue be studied. I think we have as a collective council, and I prefer it to be studied before we issue new permits. So that, for that reason, I will be voting no on this tonight.
Understood entirely. Other perspectives from... So actually, maybe a good opportunity to hear from staff on kind of next steps on considering what was discussed as part of Tobacco 21. Is there an ongoing kind of project in just where do we sit?
There is not an ongoing project at this point, and we apologize if we dropped that the last time we talked about Tobacco 21. We'll be happy to start that up and to look at how we can limit those locations, if there's a way to put some of those when they renew or not renew, and then also limit the number. So we will look at that. We just have to start that again.
I think it'd be helpful to perhaps understand, and maybe the first step is to understand what council's options are, and then to kind of gauge interest on...
Sure.
Do we wish to make that policy change? Or is there, you know, many... There are communities that do make that policy, you know, distinction, and there are those that have more of a free-market approach and don't make any limits. And so I think maybe to bring back, maybe the next step is to bring back to council what those options might look like, so then we can make the policy decision first on there being any limitations and what that might look like.
Excellent suggestion. We'll come up with some different ways to look at it, what kind of options you have. Just, and then, once we get the council to decide, we'll move forward on whatever you guys want to do.
I do have to say, in absence of, we haven't taken that step. And so since we haven't taken that step, I'm hesitant to restrict a license on we haven't, we haven't made that restriction. I appreciate some on council may feel otherwise, and we, as council, have an ability to approve these individually, and that's why we have this ability to approve individually. But personally, I would support approval of the application tonight because it does meet our current regulations. And until we've made the policy decision to go a different route, I do think the applicant is following the policy and our ordinance that we have on the books today. Just my personal perspective.
I would agree, Madam Mayor, only because of the restriction wasn't there before they made the application. Now, if we want to put in some kind of a restriction for further use, I understand that. I'm one of these free-market guys, even as bad as this is, I mean, it's tobacco, but it's nothing, it's an absolutely legal entity. And unfortunately, that, it's something that they weren't aware of. I'm sure that there was any kind of a restriction when they applied for the license. So unfortunately, I would have to, I'd have to approve their license, or at least vote that direction.
Mayor Bain?
Sorry. I agree as well. I would love to see the study and see what other cities do, no doubt. I think it would be helpful to us moving forward as a city. But just as you both have said that tonight, they didn't, they didn't know that this discussion was going to come up, so.
Mayor Bain, I just, when I saw this on the agenda too, I was thinking back, and I think it was just before COVID happened, when we had this discussion, and think that, that maybe that that's why we dropped that. But I know we had a very strong discussion about a moratorium. And so, because I'm, I'm not for another vape shop in our city. I just don't think it's necessary. So I will vote no. But I'm just, I think the sooner we can get that information to council about a permanent is, would be great.
Understood. And that, you know, that moratorium signals to the market that this is our, you know, this is our intent, and it could be a temporary moratorium or a permanent, you know, moratorium. But I do think we owe that to the community so that, you know, generally, when these licenses come, there's been a lot of groundwork, there's probably already a lease in place, and there's a business plan, and there's a lot of legwork that has taken place in advance that, you know, even if we're going to consider a moratorium, we should put some time on it that allows people to make decisions according to the policy change that we might make, so.
And also, just to speak to the Tobacco 21, you know, we were one of the first communities to do that. We did it before the state of Minnesota did. And so we can be pretty proud of that particular legacy. Other than that, I think this gets to be a little more complicated, being that we didn't have this in place. And I don't doubt that we need to do something like that. It's just that this particular issue is, it makes it a little bit tougher for me, so. Basically, I'd have to make a motion that we approve Consent Agenda 7K.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Opposed.
Opposed. Two oppose, and motion carries. We will move on to our next item, which is item 8A, the Bridge Academy Project Public Hearing and Resolution. Abby?
Thank you, Mayor Bain. Bridge Academy seeks to build a new daycare facility at the corner of Highway 61 and Hardwood Ridge Parkway. They obtained site plan approval from the city's planning commission in July of this year. It was determined that there were some underlying easements on the property, some of which were platted, and one of which was added on after the fact. And I'm including that up on your screen right now.
I apologize, this wasn't in the packet. I think it was intended to kind of show you at least what's being proposed to be vacated. There are three easements. Two of them are drainage and utility easements. That's not...
We're not seeing that quite yet.
I'm seeing a tent.
Isn't that beautiful? Wouldn't we all just love to be there?
It doesn't look like Forest Lake.
Yeah, it doesn't look like Forest Lake landscape, for sure.
I've never... Beautiful, though. There we go.
There we go.
So there's two different drainage and utility easements proposed. One is on the north side of the property, the other one is kind of on the western side of the property. These were platted easements that were needed as part of future development or anticipated development for the drainage and utilities to accommodate the site. The other easement, so both of these are described on one single resolution. That would be your first public hearing tonight. The other easement is a trail easement located at the southeast corner of the property. This was a separate recorded document that was intended to tie into the Hardwood Creek Trail and would connect to a former development that was proposed for a site. At one time, a QuickTrip was contemplated at the site, and that trail would connect up to the QuickTrip. QuickTrip is not going to happen, Bridge Academy is. You have now just recently approved an improvement agreement with Bridge Academy as when you adopted the consent agenda tonight. So these easements are no longer needed. So tonight before you is two separate public hearings with two separate actions. The first one would be a public hearing to consider vacating the drainage and utility easement on a single resolution. And the second public hearing would be to vacate the trail easement. Staff would recommend for both that you move to approve the separate resolutions.
Perfect. Thank you, Abby. Before we open up public hearing and kind of move forward, any questions for Abby? Otherwise, just from a process standpoint, it would be my intent to do the public hearing first, do a vote on the Resolution 8222203, and then do the second public hearing, and then do the vote on the second resolution. But before we open that up, any questions for Abby? All right. Hearing none. With that, then let's open up the public hearing for Resolution 8222203, which is the Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. And we'll open public hearing. And Karen, is there anybody online for our public hearings this evening?
I have no one.
All right. We will give just a few... We'll give it a little bit of time. All right. Seeing nobody come forward, we will close public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Council, for your consideration, is Resolution 8222203. Any questions, or if not, I will entertain a motion?
Mayor Bain, I move adoption of Resolution Number 08-22-22-03, a resolution vacating a public drainage and utility easement located within the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And motion carries. And next this evening is our public hearing for our Resolution 822204, which is the Headwaters Village Platte Trail Easement Vacation. And with that, we'll open public hearing. And is there anybody that would like to come forward to speak in the public hearing relating to the trail easement vacation? And nobody in person. Karen, anybody online?
No one online.
Nobody online. We'll give it just a moment. And with that, we'll close public hearing, bring conversation back to council. Council, for your consideration, is Resolution 8222204. Happy to entertain a motion or any other questions or discussion points?
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 08-22-22-04, a resolution vacating a public trail easement located within the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next on our agenda, the Third Lake Estates Estates Letter of Credit Reduction, Number 4. And this is an item that was tabled from our last council meeting. Abby, do you want to catch us up from...
Sure.
Kind of what is, what is being requested and kind of the discussion that got us up until the point of tabling for tonight?
Yeah, so staff had, Third Lake Estates has made all of their public improvements, and staff has submitted a formal request to the council to reduce their letter of credit to amount of 10% of the original letter of credit, its amount of $54,100, and to hold that for a period of two years. And the reason that we do this is we don't know what could happen with that public infrastructure during freeze and thaw cycles, and we'd like to retain some funds to be able to make repairs if needed. This is a customary practice that we do with all of our development agreements for any public improvements. The developer did request the city accept, in lieu of the letter of credit, a promissory note that was brought up at the last meeting. I know the council at the last meeting wanted to understand the options available. So the development agreement very specifically calls out that the city can either retain a letter of credit for that reduced amount, a bond, or a cash deposit. The property owner developer is aware of all three of those options and is still requesting the city's consideration of a promissory note. The promissory note gives us no financial guarantee. It just is a statement that says he promises to pay if there's a problem in the future. That does pose a risk for us, even in the unlikely event something could happen with that public infrastructure. We prefer to retain a portion of those funds so that we have that assurance in those securities. It also had set a pretty significant precedent, a very large deviation from our standard practice. Staff is still recommending the council move to reduce the financial securities that exist for Third Lake Estates, the Madison subdivision, in the amount of no less than that $54,100. I know this council had wanted to table it also. I think there was some counselor that may have had questions for city engineer Ryan Goodman. He's available tonight, too. I will note, right before the meeting, I recognized I didn't reach back out to Dave Madison to let him know we'd be having this conversation again. But he was here the last meeting, we did table it till now, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address any of them.
Thank you, Abby.
Well, just one. That would, that time would start from June, right? Wasn't that his...
I would have to go back, but it would be the date of the acceptance of the public improvement.
I heard June, that last meeting. I think that was, yeah, okay. So it would start from that point on, so, right? Okay. Madam Mayor, I mean, one of the reasons I voted to have a table is because I wanted a full council here when we made that decision. You know, I have no doubt that these folks are going to do what they're going to do, but after talking to several different people and considering this thing, my, my take on this is that we really can't set a precedence without, you know, by changing it. And so it's unfortunate he'll have to, I mean, my opinion, he'd have to comply with that, so.
Yeah, I would agree. Councilmember, a second. That's a really slippery slope. One of my questions is, Mr. Madison had made an argument that the infrastructure had already been in place for a period of time. So if he'd already eaten up a period of time of that warranty, and so can you address that?
Mayor, City Council, in attempt to address the question at hand. The way the development agreement states is his two-year warranty period is started upon completion of all improvements. So that included then, you know, the final, we had some minor punchless work, some curb removal and replacements. Then he had his workhorse placement, that's the final lift of the... lift of the, the road, and then the shoulder aggregate, that's on the rural section out there, which then everything was completed and accepted June third, two thousand twenty-two. So that's how the development agreement referenced that date.
Understood. Any other questions or points of discussion?
I guess I would agree with both council, the points both council member Husnick and council member Beistrum have mentioned, and I'm still kind of on the same spot I was when we first considered this item. It's just a really tough slippery slope. If there were, especially if there was some way that we could demonstrate that the security interest that we're getting is of higher security value than what our requirements are, then there might be a consideration for an exception, but for us to lower the standard on a, on a one-off basis, I think is, again, that's the part that creates the challenging precedent.
Unless you do it for everybody, you can't, you don't. That's, that's the way I look at it, so.
So with that, but, but, but there is still action that council's being asked to take this evening. The action, as I understand it, and that is requested by staff, is that we would reduce the letter of credit as indicated by staff. Is that, I just want to make sure I'm being clear.
That is correct.
And that we would be reducing that to, is it the fifty-four thousand one hundred dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and that, that is in the form of a letter of credit?
Correct.
With that, I would, I would move that council adopt staff's recommendation for the letter of credit recommendation in the amount and form as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Okay, moving on to eight D, which is resolution eight twenty-two twenty-two oh five, which is for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three lift stations and forest main improvements projects. And Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, in front of you is two agenda items, resolutions that take two different pathways. Seems like a lot of paperwork, but really why we're required to execute this is that the state wants to ensure you're not going to sell the property per the grant agreement, which would equal thirty-one point two five years. Otherwise, they don't want to give you the money that we've been successful here in obtaining. So in the bond grants that was written, it's requested funding for ten lift stations. That's why we're only talking about ten, even though the project's a little bigger than that. So it's broken out into two separate categories. Six of those stations are on their actual own parcel. That has the more stricter paperwork that goes with it. And then the other four stations are either located within right-of-way, public right-of-way, or public easements, which has less restrictive paperwork or less amount to do, we should say. So resolution eight twenty-two twenty-two oh five is a resolution declaring real property to be state bond financed property, and this declaration document needs to be executed, and the city needs to record at the county for that resolution. Second resolution is the four stations. This basically certification document that just needs to be signed by the city but does not need to be recorded at the county. So within your packets, kind of gives a brief outline of what I've just talked about, plus the locations of the lift station sites we're talking about, a resolution, and then it's the document that I've referenced, and then also a location map, if you really want to see where these are, broken out to two. So that's the request tonight here, is to pass the two resolutions that are outlined in the agenda, and I'll just open up for any questions you might have.
Perfect. Let's take questions on both resolutions, and then we'll come back to council for individual consideration. Any questions for Ryan on this? Ryan, just to maybe just make sure I'm understanding, so because we are using state bond proceeds, we essentially are certifying that we intend to maintain ownership of those, obviously because, again, we're receiving state funds for the improvements to those locations. Is that?
Yep, they want to just ensure that you're not going to sell, mortgage, or encumber, or otherwise dispose of the property, is the bulk of what I wrote in the memo there. So that's why they want you to execute these agreements, and you would have to hold on to these for thirty-one point two five years, and I think your depreciation schedule on lift stations is around fifty years, so.
I was going to say a hundred.
It's less than here.
Just kidding, yes.
Easily less than the lifespan of the structure, so.
Understand. Any questions? Council, consider resolution, the first resolution, if anyone is ready?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution zero-eight dash two-two dash two-two zero-five for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three lift stations and force main improvements, a resolution declaring real property to be state bond financed property.
I'll second. The motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. And next item is resolution eight twenty-two twenty-two zero-six, and I'll just move to approve. That council approves resolution eight twenty-two twenty-two zero-six for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three lift stations and force main improvements project, resolution certifying real property to be state bond financed property.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. All right. With that, we are at the end of our planned regular agenda this evening, and we are going to move into a discussion workshop, and our first workshop on the twenty-twenty-three budget. Just a couple of notes for anybody who's watching and following along, just to note that this is a workshop session. This is council's first look at the twenty-twenty-three budget and is part, meeting one of a planned series of meetings. We will not be taking any official action this evening. Anything that's discussed that needs official action will come forward at a later meeting, and in this case, this would be for the adoption of the preliminary levy, which is set for the last council meeting in September. And so happy to have anyone who's following along online, kind of along for this journey. This is an iterative process where we start with a first look, have a first round of feedback, and then move into more refined conversations as we go deeper into the process. So with that, kick it off to Patrick, who will kind of start our budget discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, another budget year. So we'll try to go over a schedule for what we, like you mentioned earlier, and then go through the budget. This is a very beginning phase of the budget. We're going to concentrate tonight on the general fund and basically the tax levy. We have some more work to do on the utility funds and some of the other things. We also have more work to do on capital improvements and capital equipment that we need to work through once we get through this. But this is preliminary look. When you get to the levy, that's only going to be preliminary. There may be adjustments before September or before December, depending on information that we have or don't have. Right now, we, we have some, I'll go through, we have some missing information that we need to update, and that always gives us a different viewpoint and maybe the ability to lower the levy if possible, which we always try to do if there's an opportunity. So let me start. And as you mentioned, we have a budget, a budget schedule, and tonight we are going to discuss the general fund budget and a preliminary look at the levy. On September twelfth, we will hopefully give you a look at a ten-year number. We've, we've started to put together projections for each of the next ten years to show you not only where our expenses will go, where our revenues will go, but also some of the capital equipment, some of the capital needs, and hopefully that'll give you a better picture of where we're going on a few things. That's a big item. Bring your pacemakers, bring your AEDs, whatever you may need, because it's a good picture. So oops, I'm sorry, thank you. I was going to have this up here, so. Got distracted. Thank you. And following that, just put in here to remind everybody, on the fourteenth of September, we're going to have a boards and commission training for the council for the planned commission, for the parks, trails, and lakes commission. We are also going to invite the candidates who are going to be on the ballot for this fall to take, at least give them opportunity to sit in and listen to what they may be involved with in the next year. We thought that was a good chance for us to educate them on how things work and what their roles may be, since some of them probably have no experience in doing this before. So we're going to make the invitation, they're not obviously mandated to come, but we think it's a good idea to ask them to come and listen to the training. Hopefully, on the nineteenth, we will be able to talk to you about the utility funds and all the other funds. We'll give you, if there's an update on the general fund and expenses, we will again give you that. As the mayor mentioned, on the twenty-sixth of September, you have to, by statute, or at least before the end of September, pass the preliminary levy. Again, it's only a preliminary levy, doesn't mean it can't change, it just means it can't go up. So when you adopt that, for all the people listening, that's the cap, that's the ceiling. We can't go any higher once you've adopted that. We can reduce it, and we have in the last couple of years been able to get new information and reduce it at least a little bit before the final levy. So again, we always try to see if that new information will help us do that. And then we've just scheduled a number of different workshops and updates on the seventeenth, on the fourteenth, seventeenth of October, the fourteenth of November. Those will kind of guide themselves, depending what issues come up and what kind of discussions and where we're at with the budget process. So we left them open for discussion. And then finally, we have scheduled for December twelfth, the truth and taxation public hearing, which we have to have, and then the adoption of the tax levy and the twenty-twenty-three budget. Questions on the schedule?
Just a quick note of just making sure that we've got this correct, and if so, that council's noting, the workshops are starting at six P.M. We generally start those at six-thirty. Is that by intent, or?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking when we give you the ten-year plan and some of the other things, we may need a little bit more proactive and longer discussion. If you choose, if you want six-thirty, we can do that, but I'm just not sure how much discussion we're going to have. It could go fast, but it could also get into some really discussion, because we do have a few things we may want to introduce to you about how we're going to fund different things and some of the options that we have.
I'm okay with an earlier start time, as long as everyone else is able to accommodate that. I think having longer planned time is good, so, okay, excellent.
That's the only reason. Hopefully, you know, we can get through it, and we'll explain it well enough that you don't have to have an extra half hour or hour, so. You've seen this before, but I always put it in, what's a budget? It's our number one policy document. That's, there is no other policy document that, that supersedes this one. This is, tells everybody what we're doing and where, where the money's going. It's, it's as a communication device, because it does tell where we value and where our resources are going. We use it as an annual financial and policy document, so it defines the services we provide to our residents, but it also will include the operating costs, like the general fund and the utility funds, but also the capital improvement costs, streets, and capital equipment and so forth. And as always, when we go out for bonding, the rating agents always ask for the budget, and they always ask for the financial report. Both of those documents are very important to the rating agencies, and they go through those and ask questions on those. So that's why a comprehensive budget, once we're done, will be put together so that if the rating agents ask, they have, so. And in December, we will give you a full budget, not only the general fund, but we'll, once we've gone through everything, it'll be a packet of all the expenses, some summaries. The goal, of course, is to provide the best possible services in the most efficient manner and at the lowest cost to the community. Here's the bad slide, or not the bad slide, here's the slide that everybody looks at. This is the proposed tax summary, tax levy. You see that right now we are proposing a seven-point-five, two percent tax increase. Just to go through it a little bit, we, we're increasing the general fund by approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and that takes into account our labor costs, any material costs, any of the major things that have taken place that we had just, it's a real challenging year this year to, to keep costs under control. Also, as I will say later, in the general fund, we still have two outstanding contracts that we have not negotiated, and we'll see what those bring. Those are going to be an effort to try, where are we going to get those in? We've made some assumptions, but hopefully those assumptions are good assumptions. Capital equipment fund is at nine-hundred thousand. If you remember, last year, we did a swap between the capital equipment fund and the recreation fund. We're swapping these back, so the capital equipment fund goes back to its nine-hundred-thousand-dollar level. Capital improvement, where we do streets and some other items, is remaining steady at two-hundred thousand. Small increase in debt service, that's just the debt service schedules for existing debt, not for anything future and planned. And as we go through this, we will show you a plan for some new debt next year, and one of those is for equipment certificates. And equipment certificates are used, basically you're bonding still, but you're bonding, we're going to be bonding or asking for funds to pay for fire trucks and some plow trucks. Those are high-end, very expensive things that is very difficult to pay for, as pay as you go. I mean, we, we're trying to get there, but, you know, a fire truck is eight-hundred-some-odd-thousand, a plow truck is three-hundred-some-odd-thousand. So we're going, going to try to see if we're going to do that. Maybe there's some options we're looking at still on that, so we'll come back to you. Also, the surface water fund, even though we collect surface water fees, it's not enough to do some of the projects that we're looking at. We're looking at projects to start at the downtown, where we want to create stormwater ponds and structures so that we can aid in development. We should start to do that now. It's a small amount to do, it's, it's an easy one to, to capture without having to go really deep into the downtown plan. The downtown plan isn't reflected in any of this summary, that's, that's going to have to be a separate discussion by the council. It's a big ticket. We'll have to have a, EDA and the council will have to have discussions on how or if they're going to fund that amount. The EDA remains the same at a hundred and fifty, and the parks returns itself to the fifty-thousand-dollar level. So that is, that is the summary. We have asking for thirteen thousand, thirteen million two-hundred-one-thousand dollars for a seven-point-five-two percent increase.
Patrick?
Yes.
Did parks and trails utilize the?
Not yet. I believe they're going to, when Belt's Park gets bid out and things like, that's where that's going to go for. It's going to go to capital. It's coming, yeah. The nice thing about that is it doesn't go away, it's been credited to that fund. They're trying, right now, they're doing the needs assessment in the, in the long-term capital plan, so that is built into it. Sooner or later, we'll have to have a, it sounds like a broken record, but we have to find a permanent funding source for parks and trails other than the park dedication fund, because, you know, a recession comes, you're not going to get a lot of park and dedication funds, and, and it'll slow them down, so sooner or later, we have to do that. But then we have to do that with the capital equipment and capital improvement. So we've been always working towards that as we go along. The levy, seventy-one percent is the general fund, six-point-eight-one is the capital equipment, again, fire trucks, snowplows, street sweepers, not so much a street sweeper anymore, but construction, paving. The debt service fund is where we borrow money when we have to pay our debt. If you remember, a few years back, we refinanced the bond and saved us a heck of a lot of money to do that, close to a million or more dollars, so that's why the debt service fund has been fairly steady. For a, for a city our size, we do not have a lot of debt, nor have we issued a lot of debt. It's, it's, we're, we're actually in really good shape compared to some other places as far as the amount of debt that we actually incur. And of course, the economic development fund and the parks and trails fund. Challenges to this year's budget, labor is the first one, and obviously, we have three union contracts that are settled through December of two thousand twenty-four, that's MAP, AFSMI, and the Forty-Niners. We settled those, I believe, last year, got the council to approve, and we got the union to approve them. We have two contracts that expire at the end of the year, that's the police patrol unit and the police sergeants unit. We will begin negotiations in September, I believe it's September seventh, but in September, so we don't know how long that will take. In the past, it's been a fairly cordial and relationship, and we, we got through it pretty quickly. I don't know if that will happen or not this year. Other challenges is recruiting and staffing. I think we have to tell you that. The police have had a heck of a time recruiting police officers. That is a profession-wide problem with a smaller applicant pool, people jumping between municipalities for the best deal or how it fits their lifestyle. Honestly, there's a lack of interest in, in being a police officer these days. Maybe that's because of the, all the past things in the newspaper and news, but maybe it's just a different change of philosophy, I don't know. And we have to be, we have to be wary, or not wary, but we have to know what our pay and benefit competition is, how we stack up against the other, other cities, because right now, these applicants are looking for the best deal, so. And that's making it very difficult, and we have to adapt and try to figure out how we're going to get employees that will stay more than six months or a year, which has been our recent experience. Fire. Fire in the budget, you'll see, we've increased the salaries for the paid-on call. That's gone through the joint fire board. That's gone through the Joint Fire Board, it hasn't been officially blessed there yet, but it's in the budget. That's an attempt by the fire department to retain and to recruit fire, paid-on-call firefighters. We want to continue to get paid-on-call firefighters and stay away from full-time professional firefighters as long as we can. Now, can't tell you when or if that full-time firefighters will be coming, but it does happen, it happens as you get bigger and more difficult. So, the longer we can hold out, having paid-on call, the better we're going to be by raising those salaries just a bit. It's an investment in keeping long-term dollars lower and not having to do a full-time staff. Questions on any of that? No, I'll keep going. Go ahead.
Are you intending to try to have some comparable worth-studying work done with police in particular? I mean, you're talking about, you know, taking a look?
Yeah, we're taking, we have the ability to look at other contracts right now through, we do have some of those other contracts and seeing where we're at, so we kind of know where they've been going as far as settlements go and what the wage and scales are, so we have an idea. The Labor Attorney, Susan, will also have that information, as she is probably in the middle of selling, settling dozens of these, I would guess, but we do have some of that Same thing with administration, we, any positions that we've had, we've had smaller applicant pools, our applications for administrative assistance were low, application for a planner was low, so we are also feeling the same, same struggle to get qualified people at a good price and that will want to come here. They are demanding benefits, they are demanding work from home, which we try to accommodate if possible, but being that we're an industry where people walk in the front door more than most, it's hard to have people working from home, to be quite honest with you. We have a lot of in-person traffic, so that makes it difficult for us. We also have staff turnover, but then trying to find the right fit for the new person that understands what we're doing and is good at what they do, is, has been difficult to convince. And then rightsizing the organization. There is one new position in the 2023 budget, that is Assistant in Community Development. That should right-size the community development department, make it hopefully more efficient and alleviate some of the pressures that we're feeling now, and also alleviate some of the contractual issues that we have, we have a contractual agreement with Bolton and Bank to support that. I think we can do a better, not a better job, but a more efficient and less expensive job. And that gets the Community Development Department back to 2014, where they did only have these three people, and they, when they cut it back to just one person, I think we all understand what happened there and how difficult that was for us to go forward, especially now as we continue to grow and the pressures continue to mount on development and so forth. So, we need that backup, we need that, that level, but that's the only position we are asking for this year. I think it's important that we finally get the community development on the right track so that not only internally, but our external customers understand and have good response and don't wonder what they're, why we're waiting so long or why nobody gets back to them, so.
I just want to make sure we're being clear for anybody that might be following along, the specific position in the Administration Department that is being added is?
It's an administrative support position.
Okay. An admin support to assist both community development and, well, community development covering, planning and?
Starting community development, planning, development, you know, taking in applications, processing applications, staffing the Plan Commission, and things like that. Moving on, more challenges, the general fund, we have some unknowns, we have not got our health insurance renewal yet, that we will not see until maybe October if we're lucky. That's just the way health insurance renewal is for whatever reason. And of course, I mentioned the union contracts, the two-year contracts that we have. We have, we're being impacted by the economic forces of inflation, the cost of supplies and materials, construction costs, we need, and fuel costs. Everybody's, it's starting to come back down, but, you know, we're facing 25% increase in fuel costs in this budget, so, and that's conservative, probably it'll be more, but we're hoping it's not, hoping fuel goes back down at least another half a dollar or so. But those, those are all real, the things that not only us, but the public faces every day with the inflation, materials and construction and fuel costs. We're no different in trying to control those, so, and we can't stop patrolling the streets if we run out, you know, for fuel, we have to have fuel, we have to have fuel for the public works trucks, so there's no, we have no choice, just like anybody who's commuting to work, so. Some of the major initiatives in the general fund is we have funds in there to rewrite the zoning code. The zoning code, honestly, is a mishmash of the zoning between what was once the township and the city and was thrown, kind of thrown together. It's not really functional, it's difficult to interpret, it's time we fixed it, and hopefully we've talked with our attorneys and so forth, and that would be a great project to start in 2023, hopefully finish, but may go on until '24.
I hope the sign ordinance is part of that.
The sign ordinance should be a part of that, yes. I mean, this, it's going to be?
What a nightmare.
Are you volunteering?
Yeah.
The zoning code's going to be a lot of work for not only the building, I mean, the planning department, but also for our attorneys or any contractors we have that are going to work on updating this code, and the Plan Commission, they're going to have to be understanding what we're doing, why we're going there, what the impact is, but we know that we need to clean this up, need to get it in good shape, we need to then update our city code to reflect the references that go back and forth there, so it's a big project, but I think one that's been well overdue, and now that we have a Community Development Director, and we hopefully have a planner, soon we have, we'll have a staff to begin to start to do that and also guide that process. So, I talked about the paid-on-call firefighters. The other thing I'd like to mention is, you'll see in the budget, there's a reduction of revenue of $35,000 in the recycling grant, but also a reduction in the expenditures. We're going to take a year off. We need to reboot that process and that grant, so for this year, we'll let the, we won't ask for the grant money from Washington County, but by 2024's budget and implementation, we will go back and ask for that when we figure out what we're going to do. We've kind of gone through as many things as we could, kind of run out of ideas, we just have to restart and take a look at that again. Not that we don't want it, we believe in recycling, we encourage it, but we need a break from that so we can refocus our efforts there. So, what does it cost? And this is not only, this is general fund, capital fund. Here's a fire truck that we're, we've planned to replace two fire trucks, and when we first estimated it for 2022, it was $750,000. Now it's $863,000. That's, again, that's the kind of, the inflationary and costs that we're facing, whether it's goods and materials to the manufacturer, whether it's just pure inflation, that's a huge jump for us. And you think it's two of them we're going to get, because we had programmed for two. So, that's, that's a real big jump in that. Then you can look at the squad cars, a fully-equipped squad car, 2021, was $47,000, 2022, we estimated $52,000, and now we're estimating and have quotes for $70,000 for a squad car, fully-equipped. That means lights, sirens, radios, you know, we try to cannibalize the old cars and bring in, but that's, that's the quotes we're getting, $70,000 for a squad car. That's an incredible burden to us. It really starts to throw off all the planning and all the number crunching we've done, so, again, we're trying to control those costs, we're trying to be smart about this, but that's difficult. The fire trucks and that, it's just difficult. And then we turn to the plow trucks, which at one time, in 2022, prices were $241,000, now it's $311,000. Again, we're going to try to buy two plow trucks for this year to replace, to keep it up so we don't break down. Again, that's the, that's the troubles we're coming with is trying to replace this equipment. Paving, well, a local street improvement project, which is basically just a milliner overlay, if I'm correct, is $528,000 per mile. So, every mile of road that you just scrape the top off and put it back down with some minor, maybe minor other work, it's $528,000. If you have a full reconstruction, that means you're tearing just the road up, you're putting sewers, curbs, gutters and all that, without utilities, without sewer and water or anything under the ground, it's $552 of linear foot. A full mile is $2.9 million. And finally, I gave you, hopefully give you example of North Shore Drive, that would be a full reconstruction with utilities, so reconstruction utilities, we put a little bit of a wider street, and we want to put trails and sidewalks in, which is what we want, we want nice roads, trails, sidewalks, $1,700 per linear foot, or that is estimated $8.9 million to do that project. That's the way these costs are going. I mean, the fuel cost is directly affecting what the paving is. And if you want clarity, Ryan can clarify that, but that's, these are pretty right on, these are, these are brutal cost increases. All the things I've just seen, you know, it's very difficult to try to go through. And finally, a police officer, prior to the contract negotiations coming up, it costs us about $100,000, $100,000 to employ a police officer. That's salary, wages, benefits. You know, I don't know what that's going to be in a month or two months from now, whatever the negotiations, whether it's 1%, 2%, 10%, 20%, whatever the case may be, but that's what every police officer costs you, and that's the beginning, that's the starting steps for a police officer. So, you can imagine as a veteran police officer with 10-year experience has maxed out and gone up his steps, it's, I don't have that offhand, but it's more than that, so, that's, again, another challenge, and again, trying to find police officers has been difficult. So, we have to find a path to fund all the needs of the city, the operating funds, utility funds, we have to look at the rate structure again. We just kind of went over capital equipment and large increases in those costs, the capital improvements of streets and buildings if we do something, but we have to do that. We have to do that without kicking a can down the street. We've been trying for the last four years that I've been here is to try to get there. We're making little progress, but it's not an easy progress. The public does have to understand that we truly try to balance keeping the tax rate as low as possible, but also having our infrastructure, and sometimes you can't do both, sometimes you try. I mean, it would be easy for me to tell the council to increase the tax levy $2 million to cover all the street costs for every, for 10 years, but that's a huge, that's a huge amount. So, we have to try, and the council tries very hard to make that a balance, to not increase taxes way too much too fast, but also respond to the needs of the community in paving the streets, putting in sidewalks, keeping the police and fire vehicles rolling, keeping the snowplows rolling, so it is, it's a challenge. There has been some talk about pay-as-you-go versus bonding, and I know that everybody in this room would love to have paid cash full price for their house and home when they bought it. I would love to pay full price and cash for every piece of equipment that we have to buy here. It's almost impossible. With the prices you've just seen, trying to pay for those as pay-as-you-go and keeping the tax burden as low as possible without jumping rates like we had to do with the water a few years back, is difficult. So, why does the government bond? Well, it bonds for facilities, obviously, for administrative facilities, public safety, recreational facilities. It bonds for streets and utility systems and sidewalks and trails, and sometimes it bonds for equipment, machinery and vehicles. Pay-as-you-go, you know, project funding, that's funding everything with cash and reserves. Mostly use that for short-term assets, it's not really long-term assets, because it is difficult to save for those big expenses. And one of the reasons you bond is just, not only to spread out the payment and the cost, but to have the users down the road who are going to use it, pay for it, as well as current users. So, when they pave a street out in front of your house, yeah, you're paying for it, but also the next 20 years, somebody's paying for it, or 10 years, whatever it's going to be. Well, in that time period, five or six people may move out of your block and new people come in. So, it's really spreading that out into the taxes so that the newer people or the people in 20 years are also paying for that, for the improvements. It's just a way to try to, to make that a little bit more fair, a little more equitable that everybody's paying their fair share. Again, difficult, we haven't been able to accomplish paving the streets and getting to the place where we want to, but we'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at the 10-year. And I'll be quite honest, the 10-year numbers and plan that we've put together will, will have bonding in it. We just can't, this community hasn't invested in its infrastructure enough to go as pay-as-you-go. It's just not going to be, we couldn't, can't get there unless we do something crazy and really raise rates. So, looking at a positive plan that spreads out the reconstruction of our infrastructure and vehicles and all that makes the most sense. And again, as I said earlier, we don't bond a lot here, we don't have a lot of debt for a city our size. You know, I've talked over with Elers all the time, and they say you have, you know, virtually no debt, you don't, you have, don't have very little. That's general obligation debt that's not paid by the utilities. We've had, we've had used water and sewer bonding, but that's, that's a business, that's not really related to what we do, the business pays for those bonds, so it's run, try to run like a business, so. As far as funding our streets, you know, until two years ago, was it, we didn't pay one dime of property tax to pave the street, and that's, that's really unusual. Also, another way to finance is inter-fund loans, you know, one city fund lends to another. That can create a little bit of problems with fund balances and cash flow projections, not only for the lending, but the borrowing fund. Think about the Park Dedication Fund. There was an inter-fund loan, I don't know how long ago, before I got here, and it really handicapped the Park Dedication Fund. They, they spent, I believe, almost half of their income or revenue stream to pay off that inter-fund loan, which is, it's a good way, I mean, inter-fund loans work when interest rates are high or that the lending fund is in good shape, but it doesn't work so well when the paying-back fund isn't so great. So, not really something I would ever suggest, unless it was in a unique situation or something that we could figure out a way to make it work for both sides of that equation. Debt issuance, it preserves cash resources, so it keeps our cash flow well, gives us flexibility when we need it. It is amortized over the whole life of the project. It's paid by, as I said earlier, future and current beneficiaries, and it helps to really maintain and stabilize your budgets. It's predictable, you know what the, what you're going to have to pay when you beat that bond, so you know the, what the, what the tax is going to be, you know, what the rate's going to be, and you try to build that into your budget equation, and hopefully it smoothes out, you know, instead of going like this and this every year, if we, let's say we needed to buy those two fire trucks, and so this year, we'd have to budget an extra million dollars somewhere. Well, how are we going to get that? So, try to save it. Again, capital improvements funds, by levy dollars only, it's the cost of paving and reconstructions of streets through 2031 is estimated to be approximately, that should, excuse me, that should be 2040, I believe, 2032, yeah, 2032, sorry, about $42 million if you would get the roads in the shape. I mean, that's not doing all the streets at once, that's doing streets over 10 years. If the city relies on increasing levy to meet the needs of the paving and reconstruction through 2032, and these are, these are rough numbers, it would increase the levy from $13.2 million to $55 million. It's a big number, that's a 323% increase over 10 years. So, if you have a $1,500 share of your property tax, and I'm not sure, these numbers, this is just, you know, trying to estimate, give a little ballpark, if you add 323%, it's about $4,800 more every year for somebody to pay on their property tax if we were to just fund it out of the levy dollars. That's why bonding is important, so that you don't have those huge hits, that instead of a $6,000 bill, you may only have, you know, a $5,000 bill. And that's, again, I would keep saying the balance, it's trying to balance. It's trying to balance keeping the property tax as low as we can for our residents, which is important, versus doing what we're supposed to do as a responsible government in paving and, and keeping our infrastructure.
So Patrick, I just want to make sure I'm following. So when we see the ten-year plan, the street number is about forty-two and a half, forty-three million in need? Is that what we're projecting?
Yeah, it's about that, it should be about that.
So in that ten-year plan, so then the question is, how do we pay for that? And what I'm seeing you break out is kind of the difference between pay as you go versus doing some sort of bonding.
Yes, these are real rough numbers. These are just trying to give a picture number. You know, I won't tell you that it's down to the right decimal point or anything, but this is some, this is pay as you go. This is, this is more pay as you go than a bonding. Hopefully, if you do bonding, you can smooth that out. And we've talked about smoothing out those things when we talked about utility rates. You don't want those major spikes. You'd rather do a one or two percent every year instead of a ten percent every five years. Well, that's what we're trying to try to do with the bonding is. In the ten-year plan, every so often, bond and smooth that out, and we'll try to give you that, those numbers as we get to that ten-year plan.
It's helpful to see. And will be kind of part of the ongoing conversation as we talk about what that ten-year plan is and what projects are included and then ultimately to this slide, how is it paid for?
Took us a while to get there, to understand what we were doing with the ten-year plan, but we've, we've got some preliminary numbers, some estimates on our part, some assumptions on our part that we will share with the council. History of our tax rate. If you, we just got this on Friday, we, Friday at four thirty, actually, is the county gave us the information to be able to calculate this year's estimated tax rate. So if you look at it, we've always been at forty percent, right around forty percent. You know, we've, we've come down from a high of forty-four percent down into the forty-ones and forties. With the reassessment and with the new information from the county, our tax rate will be thirty-five point six percent.
That tax rate, that thirty-five percent tax rate, so that is taking, that's assuming? Is that using the projected kind of what's currently in the general fund?
That's projected levy that we showed you.
Yep, and so?
Calculated with the county's information and the reassessment.
Right.
It's thirty-five percent. Now, I would not argue, but I would let you contemplate whether we want to stay closer to the forty percent. That would obviously increase the tax levy, but it would keep it level. I mean, the goal is to keep a level. We'd have to calculate what that would gain for us, but we could look at keeping that level at a forty percent rate instead of a thirty-five percent rate. I think we probably, we'd obviously raise the levy a lot higher than it is now. Not suggesting it, I'm just saying that's something you should think about if that's
What are, what are the dollars? What would that, what is that math and?
Hold on.
While you're pulling that up, just some thoughts as I see that. So we always, this gets, this gets to be incredibly confusing for residents and confusing even for council sitting up here, just, you know, the difference between what's the percent of the levy increase versus what does that mean for the tax rate?
Sure.
And there are communities that do manage their budget based on a level tax rate, and it means that in years when property values are going up, those are good years for them and areas where they are able to grow. And then there are years when property values are decreasing or not growing, and then that is years where the city budget kind of stays flat. Historically, the city of Forest Lake has not taken that approach. We've taken more of a levy perspective where we've looking at, looked directly at what are the dollars in the general fund, and we've kind of historically managed to that.
That's correct.
And so as residents are looking at and have asked questions about what are their concern over their property taxes and what does that mean for city government, you know, one of my personal reactions to that is the checks and balances here are what are we, what are we going to do with that increase?
Correct.
And in our current plan, we are, you know, staying, we are decreasing that tax rate, which means we're not.
Capturing what we.
We're not growing to the amount of what property values are growing towards.
That's correct.
And what, you know, Patrick, I appreciate, the question you're asking is a good policy question and kind of a question that, you know, we all need to think about is what is our ongoing philosophy and how do we manage this on a go-forward basis?
Yes.
Good news is we don't need to make this decision tonight, but it's helpful to see the numbers because we spend a lot of time in these discussions talking about the expense side of the equation. And the other side of it is, you know, what is the revenue and what is the, you know, what is, what's available to us? And helps to see kind of where this tax rate has come in.
Yeah, and, and the misnomer about budgeting is the, the revenue is actually real harder than the expenditures. It really is. I mean, it, it is trying to find enough money to cover it without getting yourself killed by the public because you've raised taxes twenty percent, so. Yeah, no, I just wanted to put that in your minds if, if you want to consider it. It is a policy. If we were to do something like that, we could tell you where that funds would go. It'd probably go into capital or in streets and things like that. We treat it more as a one-time revenue and try to do it that way. On your screen is the calculation based on the levy that we are proposing. Unplugged in.
I feel like I opened up this can of worms.
I'll unplug and plug back in.
And, you know, just the, it's always an easy question to ask in times when property taxes have gone up versus say, well, maybe we should follow the tax rate up. And that's an, it's, it's, it's a sexy proposition. The challenge is, is if we're heading into a recession and for, sitting in this same meeting next year, and we're deep in, deeper into a recession and property taxes are down, then we're saying, how are we cutting? Because you have to live on both sides of that, and that's just part of.
Absolutely correct on that.
We're talking about property values.
I'm sorry, property values, right. If property values have declined, then we're sitting here saying, how do we cut? And we've.
That's why if we ever did something like that, forty percent, I would recommend that any of the excess funds go to a one-time expenses where we could cut that back for, again, if we put it all into street paving, so that if we do run into recession, we could take that back out, so.
That discussion came up at the Board of Equalization when we packed the house up there, when everybody's evaluations went up twenty-eight percent. And that was a big concern and rightfully so, I think, because, you know, they're suffering from the same problem we have.
I agree.
They lost ten percent of their buying power rate and so.
And I'll show you that in a minute, what it actually does to people. But so this is the, the format that the county gives us to calculate this, and as you see, it's thirty-five point six three two percent. That's our rate, but really of more interest as, I guess, do that. The more interest is what does it do to the homeowners? So you see here, you have two charts, and one is the values from twenty twenty-two, and then the bottom chart adds the twenty-seven point six percent that the county's estimated or has given us, that's the growth. So in line fourteen of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, if you add the increase in the market value, it comes close to three hundred and sixty-six thousand. And then you see the calculation. So that two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar home, which paid eleven twenty-nine in twenty twenty-two, will now pay twelve eighty-nine in the proposed levy. And if you go to the three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollar home that paid twelve forty-eight, that home will be close to a four hundred thousand dollar house, which will be paying fourteen twenty-one. That's the city's share of taxes. So that's what the, now you're seeing what the tax rate has done versus what the market value has done. That's what, that's what this is doing. Give you a minute if you have questions, it's.
Well, one big thing hanging out there in the opener, these couple contracts that we're looking at coming up, so we don't, got a couple unknowns for sure.
Yeah, we do have the contracts unknown. We, we've, again, baked into the, to the budget certain dollar amounts, which I'll share to you on one-on-one, but I won't share it to the public at this point, so.
What makes me, what makes this budget season challenging is the collision course between the escalating property values and what that has, everything that comes behind that, but then also escalating costs and also the potential of, you know, the potential for recession and what the future, just that uncertainty, because it's kind of a collision course that's challenging.
Yeah, that property value thing might come to a screech and halt, too. We don't know over next year, we'll see.
Yes.
That is right.
Yeah.
And also some of the, you know, some of the growth that might come from, you know, future expansion that could slow, and we've certainly seen as a city the impact of when, you know, when that growth slows, and we're still talking about what happened in two thousand and eight, and that weighs on my as well.
Yes, and, and it should weigh in. I mean, we don't exactly know where development's going at this point, whether it's going to continue or starting to pull back. And we see, we're seeing with, and I did mention in the general fund, we're starting to see some pullback in building permit revenue, so that's an early indicator of some pullback in that industry. And we're starting to have a hard time getting hold of some of those developers who were breaking the doors down, so they're not returning calls so fast, they're not in such a hurry. So those are really early indicators of something may be coming, or it's just everybody's unsettled right now until things just calm down. So we just don't know yet. That's why this is a really, really challenging year. I mean, it's, it's, it's an interest, interesting year to try to figure the puzzle out, but it's, it's, it's challenging. I'll go back to finish off the presentation, and I think this is the last slide I had. Any questions? That's the presentation. We will, if you have any questions on what's in the general fund, we just wanted to give you an introduction, give you a chance to get it in your heads. You can look through the general fund. If you have questions for us today or at the next session, please do. We've given you a copy of the budget, I believe, so just look through it. And if you have questions, we gave you a sheet that tells you most of the major changes. Probably missed one or two, but it tries to summarize most of the major changes in the general fund.
So I would anticipate that at that Monday, September twelfth meeting, we would, we would kind of be painting that full picture a little bit, correct?
Yes.
You know, proposed, proposed bonding and would it be possible to get that information ahead of time?
Yes, if we possibly can, we sure will.
Okay. Just nice to come in having digested it a little bit.
Yes, we will, and the twelfth, the twelfth, we'll try to give you the ten-year look ahead of time. Probably have to give you spreadsheets about this big.
We welcome big spreadsheets.
With teeny tiny numbers.
With as teeny tiny numbers as you can get. So you don't know what we're doing now. Yeah, yes, we, we have a, we have an outline, we just have to go through it. And, and we, because of the new assumptions with the vehicles now that we're getting priced, these kind of pricings with the proposed tax levy, that changes it, and then with the proposed bonding, we just have to update all of that and take the next couple of weeks to hopefully give you a better look at what twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-two looks like.
Patrick, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
You suggested the candidates showing up at one of these meetings with the September fourteenth.
Yes, the training, yes.
May, personally, I think they should be at every one of them.
Disagree. I will invite them.
You know, and I'll make that point to a couple that I know, so. Because this, this is really important stuff and they can see what's going on here.
Yeah, it's important and it's the, probably the most challenging budget we've processed or at least puzzled that we've had for at least four years. I mean, not the other ones were easy, but with all the forces right now, it makes things interesting to try to figure out how to make this happen. And then adding on, if we can look at a ten-year future, which when we get to the ten-year plan, what we will recommend somewhere down the line is like a semi-adoption, and that we will update that ten-year plan every year to put on a new year and drop off the old year, so you constantly have.
Where are we with, where are we with TIF districts right now? I mean, as far as those running out or coming to an end or?
Yeah, I don't think any of them are really close to running out. Do you know those dates?
Mayor and City Council, I know that one is not going to decertify at the end of this year, but the other ones do have quite a bit of years remaining on them, probably going out fifteen to twenty years still, if I remember correctly. But I can get you that information for our next meeting.
That'd be helpful, it really would. Thank you, appreciate it.
Also would point out for anyone that's kind of looking at the detail, the last two pages of our packet, Kevin, I think you might have put this together, thank you, it kind of breaks out the, the, kind of summarizes in a two-page summary, the major changes that are creating the seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar proposed impact to the general fund. So thank you for putting that in there, it's helpful. I think that just becomes kind of a great discussion document as we're trying to classify and kind of make decisions on, kind of bundling these things together helps to kind of create a good discussion point, so. The, just a couple of questions as we, as I think about the overall presentation. You know, as we, as we're looking at the upcoming contracts, Councilmember Bystrom had asked for, and it'd be helpful to kind of have some additional conversation and information available for council, but also to the public on comparison to other cities. And I would say both police and fire. I know that the, the fire ask is a much smaller number just because it's a smaller budget item, but it is important as we're thinking about just trying to maintain the pay-on-call model. So it'd be helpful to see some comparison data and to have that available for those who are also kind of watching this year's budget conversation, just helpful background. And then we talked about making some, you know, staff initiative in twenty twenty-three related to the zoning code initiatives. Part of that is also what we have committed to in our comp plan. Is that, is that right? Am I understanding that right? That yes, there is some future alignment that's needed between what was historically the township and the city, and that needs to come into alignment, but then there's also future alignment to the comp plan? Is that what you're considering as part of that process?
Absolutely correct. Every time you update your comp plan or issue a new one, you should always look at your zoning code to make sure that it reflects what your comp plan says, and that's also part of, part of what we should be doing.
And I think, for, you know, it's something we, we talked about as soon as we passed the updated comp plan, but it's, you know, we've gone through now a couple of year cycles and we're not getting any.
Yeah, we need to get to that, yes.
Right, we, we need to just tackle that, because I think the further we're out of alignment, the more challenges it creates and causes all sorts of.
Definitely creates challenges.
Yeah, yeah. And then specifically around, you know, just looking at the, the ticket, the, the large dollar increases that we are seeing on some of our equipment.
Yes.
Some sort of prioritization, if we needed to slow down purchasing, if we thought that perhaps vehicle pricing were coming down, who knows, right? But, you know, is, is there a time where we might, you know, if our replacement plan is every three years, are we extending that for a period? It'd be helpful to kind of just know, are we turning right on plan? Or what also I, I'm not sure of, and be helpful for council to know, have we already extended in that car that we thought we were going to return at three years, we're already sitting at seven years? It'd be good to just know where we are on those useful lives, to know how urgent is that replacement, or is it something we could delay a year and see prices rebound?
Yeah, and we have delayed already. Last year, we were going to do equipment certificates. We were seeing the increases then, we said, okay, maybe we'll ride this out and things will get better. It hasn't gotten better. The fire trucks are going to be a necessity, police cars, you know, they go, they, they get hard miles and, but we can give you the whole replacement schedule so you can take a look at it, if that's what you wish.
It'd be helpful to at least see that, where we, where we sit. And I hesitate to even head down that path because as council, we have recovered from some of those delays in the past, and we've, you know, tried to get back to a more current schedule, and it'd just be good to see where we are.
One more question on the fire trucks, Al. I mean, part of this is a Columbus thing, too. Would those prices reflect that, our, just our share of that?
The price was the total cost, so there will be revenue coming from Columbus on the fire truck purchases.
Yeah, so I mean, there's some coming from Columbus on this.
Correct.
That's why I'm asking if that total amount we just looked at was all ours or was part of that Columbus?
Yep, overall cost.
Overall cost, yes. And that's part of the revenue that's shown in that fund, so.
Yeah. Well, we're looking at a twenty percent. Well, we're looking at twenty percent.
Yep.
Twenty-one percent or whatever it is.
Correct, reduction for our share in that cost.
Yeah, I kind of piggyback on Mayor Bain regarding the equipment. You know, we've seen a significant increase in a year. I mean, have, is there a historical precedence, and maybe not, I don't know, for, for pulling back, for moving the opposite direction? Or would we expect, and of course, it depends upon what's happening with the economy and supply chain and all of those things. But we are going to, are we going to see this acceleration of cost increases moving into twenty twenty-four, for example?
Be quite honest, your guess is as good as ours. We don't know. You know, with, with the COVID and all that, and how it's disrupted everything, we don't know if it's, you know, if it's going to go up. I doubt if it's ever going to go back, it usually doesn't happen too often, unless they are inducing new models or something and trying to sell them. But I don't see, I can't tell you where it's going to go in the next couple of years. If, if the supply chains get better, if the cost of steel gets better. You know, you can, you can guess as good as I can, or I don't think anybody in the room here can understand why it's gone up so much, and if it's going to change course. Sooner or later, market forces will have to change that, because like we're talking, is people will start to delay those purchases because they can't afford them. And then that, like everything else, should slow down, slow down the, the, the cost increase. I mean, you see that when you're in, you know, if you buy a car, a lot of, in a recession, people slow down, and so all of a sudden, prices aren't going up, or they're discounting them. We have no way to predict it, because it's been so unusual, and so really out of what I would ever have considered normal increases. I mean, these are just crazy, crazy increases.
Yeah, and I realize we don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, it's, it's sort of finding that sweet spot. Do you, do you wait for that correction? Or do you move because you're going to see this acceleration in cost?
Exactly.
You know, so it's.
But, and the other thing, the other force that we have to deal with, an example, for the fire trucks, well, we won't get them until twenty twenty-four?
Right.
Two years old, yeah.
Will the other ones last that long? Will it cost us more money to replace that motor transmission or whatever may go along with that? And what's the delivery on the squad cars these days?
Yeah, the squad car, you're looking at six months to a year.
Again, those squad cars are under road a lot. We start to lose one, one gets in an accident. That's the difficult, the same thing with the plow trucks. So that's the other factor that, that kind of throws a wrench into it all as well.
Well, I guess for me, just being, being, you know, when I'm thinking about making decisions about this, to be able to kind of map that out, right? Okay, so, you know, we, you know, here's our levy. We want to bond in year one for this dollar amount for these items.
And maybe when we get to the twelfth, or we talk about ten years, maybe we should flip the twelfth and the nineteenth and bring you some of the utility funds, the capital funds, or at least the, at least the equipment funds and the capital fund instead, or at least make that a part of the, of the twelfth along with the ten-year plan, so that you have a better look at what's, the schedules look like. So we'll, we'll talk about that internally, we may bring those both on that day.
Okay, that would be helpful, even if it were preliminary.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to see that sooner rather than later. Council, other reactions, points of, points of question, additional detail you'd like to see? As, you know, this is our first look tonight, and certainly always a lot of information to take in, but any other thoughts or questions? All right.
Lots of close meetings, so that'll keep everybody fresh in their mind.
Yeah, that's, no opportunity to get off track, that's for sure.
You'll have a target on your back, so that's okay.
Other information you would like?
No, I think if, please, if you have questions, or you have anything you need before the next session, or would like to come in and discuss, please do. Again, it's, it's a challenging budget if you need more information to make better decisions. We're here to help you do that, so.
And I guess one more question for me is, where does, where does the downtown plan enter in here along the way?
The downtown plan does not enter in here. You're, you're looking at probably at the end of the day, when you get there, they, what did he quote, thirty-five million?
Yeah.
Probably with inflation, it'll be forty million into ten years. But no, that is not here. That is not in our ten-year plan yet. That, we're treating as an entirely separate kind of project issue. You know, I can easily give you a schedule where we could bond for up to thirty-six million, you know, twelve million dollars every fifth year or something like that. But there's a lot of work that the EDA and the council have to do with what goes first, when they're going to do it. The only thing we've mentioned about the downtown plan is the surface water, storm water, is that we'd like to get started on those other projects that will allow development downtown, which will eventually be paid back by a fee on the developers. But we need to get those in place early, so, and that's at really minimum costs, we, we just need to do those.
Does the EDA have room in its budget if we were wanting to start, like, one of the studies that the downtown plan contemplated? Like, for example, the boat, the boat launch? I think that maybe we had talked about, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had talked about that that could fit within the EDA's budget?
Correct, yeah, the, they do have capacity for, I would say, small-scale studies. Like, large-scale project at this point, they're not financed for, but some of that initial works, they're not losing momentum. There is that, those dollars are there to keep those projects going, so we can continue to work on the plan as we figure out the financing for the whole thing.
That's a really good distinction, Dan, thank you for using those words. So it's the, the distinction would be where we've talked about doing a preliminary study that could fit within the EDA budget. The plan to actually, or the budget to actually do the project is not budgeted, but potentially there could be some dollars to do a study to help inform a decision.
And it's a good idea, if you recall, we did a water study, we did a sewer study, we did a stormwater. So we know those, we did those before we even got to the downtown plan. If we can do the relocation study or whatever, study where, and it's a good idea to get those out of the way first, so you really do know where you're going. At least it's, and Dan's right, we keep momentum on that, we keep it in the forefront. You know, the whole downtown plan should be the, one of the priorities of the EDA next year, and how to figure out what's going first, and if, how that all works, so. It's a, that's going to be as, as challenging as this is. It's a big, it's a big project. And then the council will have to decide, is the downtown plan, how does that relate to paving your streets? And, and, you know, which, pick one, right? So pick your arsenic, or pick your whatever, so. It's, yeah, it's going to be difficult to, to try to figure that one out as well. That's a big project that almost matches your capital needs for the city in the entirety, so.
That's the worst part about it.
Yeah.
We're going to spend forty million dollars to put it in the streets.
It's a decision we have to make sooner or later.
Other, any other questions, points of consideration related to the budget? All right, we can bring tonight's conversation on that to a close, and certainly more to come in our following meetings. And again, that schedule is, that schedule is presented in the information from, that staff had presented, and also I would just point to those last two pages of the council packet that really do a nice job of summarizing those specific projects that make up this year's changes to the budget. All right, with that, we are ready to move on to staff updates. Let's take our usual rotation, and Karen?
And Mayor Bain and council members, I don't have any updates tonight.
Dan?
Mayor, members of council, speaking of downtown plan, I just received the final versions of all the documents for the downtown plan. Those came in today, I will get those posted up on the website, so everybody will be able to view the, the final versions. There aren't very many changes from what was approved, it just marks them as final, and kind of goes through that, the finalization project or process. So those will be posted this week, and want everybody to know that the website is still on track, met with the designers last week. Also, meeting with Paul from L A TV to talk about the color palette, to kind of tapping his color expertise to see what kind of tweaks you can make to the color palette of the website. But we're still on track for a late twenty twenty-two, early twenty-three launch on the new website. So that's all on track for where it should be at this time of the year.
City planner position, we had a very low applicant pool, but we are beginning interviews this Friday, hoping that we might be able to secure candidates. That's really all I have right, well, I shouldn't let you know that as Administrator Casey did mention, some of our development is slowing down. When I first started, it was probably about eight residential developments, we're down to about three or four that are still trying to move along. But I think there will be some things that'll be coming your way still yet this fall for probably twenty twenty-three construction. So it is a little hopeful that we won't be without any platted development approvals this year, so.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, just a couple of things, just again, to remind everyone about the training session on the fourteenth at six o'clock. And the other issue is that you all got some emails about noise complaints. We are looking into that and trying to figure out a solution to that, those noise complaints. We'll talk with the offending parties and try to work up a solution, so.
Thank you. Dave?
No updates this evening.
All right, Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, just along Highway ninety-seven, if you've seen a lot of the barriers along there, that's part of the two thousand, I can't even think of the project name anymore. We have so many twenty-ones, twenty-twos, twenty-threes. The lift station in Forest Main project, so that's that portion of Forest Main that's being replaced. We hope to have the new line in by middle of next week. So that's what all that stuff's going on along that corridor. And then also, MINDOT has made some progress on some conceptual plans that we're going to be, with a staff meeting with MINDOT again this Wednesday, and talking about the Highway ninety-seven stuff. So I would say the next stuff would be coming pretty soon, going public with that and some public engagements. The difficult thing here is MINDOT's still remote, so that's, a lot of their open houses have been online situations, so that's kind of where we stand with that. But, you know, last Monday, we had the open house for County State Highway thirty-two or Eleventh Avenue, and I thought that was very well attended with elected officials. So it was good having the key stakeholders in that room to hear some of the input from residents, but just, you know, hear firsthand from the county as that project evolves. And it's going to be very difficult with the tight corridor through there, and what we want to balance to have in the project, pedestrian movements, potentially some realignment on some local roadways. How's, we're getting involved with the school district, we have a meeting set up, I think after Labor Day now, that's been punted to, but involving the school district early in this project development. And then just stormwater is going to be a big thing here, and then how that all comes together. So appreciate your attendance on that.
Excellent, thank you, Ryan. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, just want to let you know that we currently have three vacancies for police officer in our current staffing. And these are not new positions, two officers left to get completely out of police work, and one left for another law enforcement organization. So with that, we had a police officer hiring, interviews last week, we had just over twenty applications. And it was, interviews went really well, and there were some really good candidates out of that pool. So we'll be backgroundering, background investigation of four potential candidates to fill those positions. And to just give you some perspective, when I was hired here twenty-two years ago, I was one of just under three hundred applicants for one position opening. So that's just the environment we're in right now. And then Arts in the Park, I believe there are two more.
How many applicants did you say we had?
Just over, I believe it was twenty-two. Yep. And then I believe we had two more Arts in the Park events scheduled. And we've had officers at every single one of the events, and a lot of great feedback, both from the community members and the officers. So it's really nice to have them out there and being part of the community, and answering questions, and taking pictures with kids, and handing out stickers. So that's all I have for you, unless you have questions for me.
Chief, we have been short for a while, and so when we started the year, I'm just trying to give perspective of the three, the three current vacancies. When we started the year, were we down one? Do we have one open spot at that point? So I'm just trying to get a.
Yeah, so.
It's been a while since we've been to full staff.
Yeah, we haven't technically been to full staff, I think, in three years.
Okay.
And what, what has happened, we had one individual at, officer that we hired, and he was here for six months, and nothing against the police department. He said he really enjoyed the community, he loved the department, he's just decided to get out of police work altogether. He just said it was right for his family. So it's just kind of been a revolving door of trying to, to get up to a full staff. But yeah, so it's, they're, just want to make it very clear, there aren't new positions that we're adding, we're just trying to fill the vacancies that we have.
Yeah, so how are you, how are you doing with, you know, so three down, and what does that, paint some picture, like, what does that mean? Like, how are, how are you filling those?
So it's, it's, it's difficult, you know, we're not the only department that's dealing with this, so I want to make that very clear. But it is difficult, because you have, you know, so many officers who patrol the streets. You know, they still have vacation, and, you know, they're sick time or what have you. Unfortunately, there's times that we, you know, can't allow officers to take time off, or they're forced in to fill a open position at the very last minute. And that, that, you know, it gets, it gets difficult, you know. So that part has, has been a struggle, you know, we're getting by. But, you know, we still have the three officers in the schools, they'll be going back into the schools starting next week, I believe. And it was good timing, if you want to call it that. So two of them that came out of the schools, because they come back to the department and work on patrol, it was good having those two. So that, that has helped quite a bit. And then we do have one officer, he's in field training right now, he's doing very well. And then we're really hoping that we can get three very highly qualified candidates out of this hiring pool, and hopefully can get them started. If everything goes good, they have to, you know, still pass the background investigation, the medical, the physical, or I'm sorry, physical and a psychological and all that. But we're hoping like mid-October.
Well, thank you for that update, and, yeah, it's challenging time.
Yep.
Chief Newman?
Mayor and members of the council have a few updates today. Tomorrow night, Tuesday night, we have Public Safety versus Coaches and our annual softball game at Fenway Fields. It is open to the public, it's a family-friendly event. Gates open at five, it is free. Games are at six and seven fifteen, it is a doubleheader. With making this a family-friendly event above just softball, Flock has, is providing a bouncy house, rock climbing walls, cornhole bags, other games, and they'll have a band out there as well. So everybody is invited to attend, and just want to make a note that we're two years, Public Safety has beat the Coaches two years running, so we're open to continue that. On Thursday night, Forest Lake Fire is hosting a mutual aid drill with seven of our neighboring mutual aid departments. That begins at six o'clock in Cedar Park and Bixby Park. We are doing a water flow drill using kind of a new process for supplying large water volumes to the first-out engine, something that we hope is going to make us more efficient, should we have larger structure fires, and help us be more successful at extinguishing those fires quicker. So that's tomorrow night, or Thursday night. And then update on hiring, so we put forty-five signs up in Forest Lake, thirty-five signs up in Columbus. The signs in Forest Lake have been up over a month, the signs in Columbus have been up for a little over three weeks. Since we've placed those signs, we've received two applications. We have ten total, eight have come since the last hiring, which was one-one of twenty-two, and have, we've received throughout the year. Application process closes on nine-one, and we will start the hiring process at that point. So not as many applications as we would like to see. We still have nine days, usually everybody waits till the last minute to hand them in. So hopefully we'll be able to get a handful of applications in the next week and a half. That's all I have for updates, unless you have questions.
So Chief, is there going to be a lot of activity with that mutual aid drill? I mean, I'm just wondering if there isn't value in a PSA to the community that this is just a drill?
Well, it's going to be just right around that Bixby Park and Cedar Park area.
Okay.
So tomorrow, I'm actually going to all the neighbors, homeowners. So tomorrow, I'm actually going to all the neighbors, homeowners.
Okay.
And advise them that we're having the drill.
Okay.
One of the reasons why that is such a great area is because that park borders, uh, to the west side and you just have no housing. And then to the north side, you have that park area, so really, I just have the, a few homes on the north side on, uh, Second Avenue and one house on 7th to the east side, and then just some adjoining neighbors. So it really, uh, is a large area with minimal impact. So yes, we will be doing notification for the neighborhood.
Okay, good. Any other questions? All right, Kim?
No update, thank you.
All right, Kevin?
No updates, thank you.
All right. We'll take, um, updates back to council. We'll start with council member Munson.
No updates tonight.
Council member Beistrom?
Uh, just attended the CR 32 open house and I just, uh, would echo Ryan's comments. It was a great turnout and there was a lot of really good feedback. Uh, residents seemed really engaged, you know, in the direction this was headed.
Agreed. Council member House Nick?
Yeah, I, I, I attended the open house also and it was, seemed to be well-attended and other than that, I have no other updates, so, thank you.
Council member Valento?
No updates from me tonight.
All right. Um, also attended that open house, mim, um, I would, um, ditto everyone's comments. I would thank you for the residents in particular for, um, showing up, asking some great questions and providing some great feedback and also to just Washington County, who always staffs a great event, so much appreciated. Lots of information to digest tonight with budget season. Um, this is just the first part of the discussion. So I look forward to next layers of detail and next, you know, kind of next, um, layers of feedback that certainly we'll be getting from the community and, um, staff as we pursue through this process, so. With that, we are at the end of our planned agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. All second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.